City Hall Auditorium, we're going to get started in about 30 seconds.
You know, he called his boss. Just like the stories from home. Stay there, we don't want it.
Nice coat, have you looked good, buddy?
Oh, thank you.
Haircut, oh.
Yeah, I got a haircut as soon as I left work today. Figured it was time, three months is too long.
Okay.
There's one on the back.
Okay. I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, September 6th, meeting of the Chickapi School Committee. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with open meeting law, this meeting is being recorded and live broadcast throughout the city. Is there anyone in the audience recording the meeting? Seeing none, it appears that all of our school committees are joining us in person today. We do not have any members who are participating remotely, as far as I can see. At this time, I'd like to ask you all for a moment of silence. We'll observe that for those who serve in the military and all of those who protect us. Thank you. I'd also like to ask you for a moment of silence for Jerry Cove. Jerry Cove was a friend to the Chickapi Public Schools. He was also the husband to the late former superintendent Barbara Cove, and certainly an advocate for the city of Chickapi and our district. A moment of silence in his honor, please. Thank you. Sarah, could we have a roll call for attendance?
Mayor View.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Barcello. Mr. Douth.
Here.
Mrs. Perret.
Present.
Mrs. Scofield. Mr. Shumsky.
Here.
Mr. Lamath.
Here.
Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mrs. Lopes.
Present.
Mr. Zatella.
Yes.
And present to absent.
Thank you. Is anyone joining us remotely that I may have missed? Seeing none, we'll continue with the agenda. Public announcements by committee members. We'll start to my left with the vice chair, Susan Zatella-Lowes.
I would like to request that Sarah put on the next agenda, our dress code policy, a discussion about our dress code policy system, please.
All set?
I'd like to welcome all the staff back for school and students also.
Tom, I'm off, you have the floor.
That's all right.
All set?
All set.
Welcome back.
Yes.
Daniel Shumsky.
Yes, thank you. I just want to welcome everyone back to school, and I'm praying for a successful school year. I also wanted to thank the Chickapi High maintenance staff for fixing the bleachers at turf at the stadium at Chickapi High. Thank you.
All set. Chat Zatella, all set. Doug Gerard.
Mayor, thank you.
Sandra Perret.
Yes, welcome back to school, everyone, and it was fun to see the photos of the various schools on Facebook. As liaison to city government, I just want to announce that on September 28th at 6:30, the chairperson, Mary Beth Piniacastello, of the Education Subcommittee for the City Council is planning a meeting to discuss traffic and school bus safety and enrollment and playground equipment. And she will send out an invitation to everyone in the future as well. And then, just in discussion of safety, constituent mentioned that Mass DOT has a, seems to be, an annual contest about safe streets. And it's probably too late for us to participate this year because the deadline for application of a short video by high school students is due Sunday, September 17th. But it certainly is something for us to consider in the future because we have some very talented students in our CTE program. So I can certainly send the information to you, superintendent. It might be something to investigate for next year, and I think the children or the students would be very excited about doing something and possibly being a winner of a statewide contest.
Please do. All set?
Yes.
Tim Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also welcome all of our students and staff back, it's the start of the school year. I wish you all the best throughout the school year. There's going to be some challenges ahead, most notably with the heat. So please all stay safe, stop for school buses who have the stop sign out, everybody. And enjoy your school year, thank you.
Thank you, Jason Douth.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of fellow members. Hope everyone has a safe school year. Anyone driving down Chickapi Street may have seen a 12-foot skeleton welcoming back staff and students in my front yard with a nice little sign, "Welcome Them Back." And I just want everyone to know that goes to everyone. I hope everyone has a very safe, successful school year. Hopefully, it'll cool down soon, so we'll get some full days of school in. But I'm excited for the upcoming school year, and thank you for all of our workers.
Thank you, and Ron Bernard.
All set, thank you, Mayor.
I just want to welcome everyone back as well. It's exciting, I can feel the new dynamic in the air in the school district, and looking forward to a very productive year, the Chickapi Public School System. And we'll move on to superintendent.
Just, if I could have a second crack at the...
You have a second crack, Doug.
The comments, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, this is a public safety concern that was on the agenda a little while back. I did meet with Councilor Laflamme, Councilor Labree, the DPW on the backside of Chickapi Comp on Summit Avenue. There were some stop signs that were being guarded or covering by some trees. And we had the DPW prune some of the trees up there, they put a new stop sign in, one was totally faded. They put some new markings on the ground to let people know to stop before the stop sign. And there are some new parking signs that are in the works. So I'd like to thank the city council, certainly, and the DPW. John Boyer came out to meet us out there as well. And it's great to see that public safety is, you know, it's important to everybody, and we're getting some stuff done for safety. There's a lot of people that are parking up in that area now. And they're using the walkway to get into school and to get out of school. So, you know, it's good to see that we're taking action on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, public announcements.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members, and those in the audience from the CEA, and those who are at home. I'd like to say, "Welcome back." We started off the school year last week with convocation on Monday, August 29th with Michael Bonner. You may have seen pictures on the website, and who was our keynote speaker. As well as, we had two sessions because we wanted to make sure that everyone was invited. So from what I understand, that was a little bit of a change-up, but it was a really good token to show that everyone should be included in convocation. And then we rolled into Tuesday and Wednesday with site PD and, as well as, school-based PDs. So there were several offerings that, I would say, Kim Erlich, I gave her a shout-out in the actual convocation. But the teachers and other pairs and other people who weren't highly in attendance. So we had a good, successful three days, and then we hit the first day of school. The first and second day of schools last week seemed probably like a past memory as we entered this week after the holiday, as we walked into a heat wave. So yesterday was a half-day of school due to the heat concerns in some of our buildings, as well as tomorrow is another half-day, which is a memorandum I just sent out to everybody in the Chickapi Public Schools. And then Friday's to be determined, for just for public record. It is, we are, superintendents are on like a line, or a meteorologist's line, and we get updates from a meteorologist outside of Boston. And for those of you who know that, I have my degree in meteorology, so I am closely monitoring the situation all the time, all the time. And so I don't take it lightly. And so I know these decisions have thrown the community for a loop, and it's new, but please believe that they are made with the best intentions. And so, a couple of other things. During public comment, he will introduce himself, but Mr. Michael Sullivan is my mentor for the new superintendent's induction program. He's sitting right in the audience. I just wanted to make sure that people know who he was. He'll speak a little bit about what the mentorship program looks like. And yes, as a new superintendent, I have mentorship as well. So I am still learning, and I'm really appreciative for his leadership. We also had some good, successful meetings. We met with the Chickapi PD, and we talked about the SRO program and how that's going to roll out in the schools. So we are moving forward, continuing with that program and how they support our kids in the community, as well as a couple of more updates. And I apologize that I'm using all this time to do so, but as you know, my bi-weekly report didn't come out last week because I hit the ground running. So I just want to take the opportunity to bring everyone up to speed. And so there was a couple of things that were emergent, as we know, we talked about safety, but one of the traffic patterns concerns over at Chickapi Comp has been addressed. I know the back gate has been a conversation that has probably permeated conversations for dozens of years. However, it was necessary due to the emergent situation of the construction that's going on on campus. So I just want to say thank you for everyone who made that happen, and the neighbors who are helping us have use of that back gate, because I know it's not easy. As well as, we had a situation today in which, as you know, the heat has been unbearable. And so we had to change around practice times and things of that nature. And I know that one of the conversations was about lighting on the field at Chickapi High. And so we had emergency situation, which that will be used tonight. But then, moving forward, as the committee brought up last time, we will look to get those lights up and running because we deserve to have that for all of our kids at our high school, at Chickapi High. So I'm going to stop there, and thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Superintendent. Open to public input, speakers shall properly identify themselves by providing their name and address. There will be a time limit of 30 minutes for the length of the period, a time limit of three minutes for individual speakers. Speakers will be chosen on a first-come, first-served basis. Topics for discussion should be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority. Comments and complaints regarding school personnel, apart from the superintendent or student, are generally prohibited unless those comments and complaints concern matters within the scope of the school committee authority. The chair of the meeting, after a warning, reserves the right to terminate speech, which is not constitutionally protected because it constitutes true threats that are likely to provoke a violent reaction and cause a breach of the peace or incitement to imminent lawless conduct or contains obscenities. Questions asked by the public will refer to the committee or administrative staff for consideration and later response, but will not be responded to during the meeting unless already posted on the agenda. First up, for public input, we have someone joining us from Zoom, Gregory Bennett. Greg, are you with us? Doesn't appear that anyone is joining us on Zoom at this moment, so we'll return to Gregory and move on to the second person who signed up for public input, is Gina Potorski Dahl.
Good evening. My name is Gina Potorski Dahl. I live at 68 Woodbridge Road, Chickapi, Massachusetts, and I'm a teacher and parent of a student at Bowie School. I'm going to start with positivity, because we should. I just actually wanted to come up here this evening and just do a grand round of thank yous. One, to the Unit A teachers who have shown their professionalism, of course. The Unit B administrators who have gone out of their way organizing. The Unit D clerks who have gone above and beyond paperwork, parents, guardians, switches, changes, enrollment. They have been absolutely astounding. The Unit E pairs who have taken their time and effort to get to know the students' needs, to make sure that they're getting on and off those buses, getting to school safely. Absolutely amazing, especially in a heat wave. And lastly, I just actually wanted to thank you, Dr. Ware, for understanding that 94 degrees is not comfortable, 80 some odd degrees in a building is unbearable, and that those of us who need the air conditioning and where those students who were let out of the building for a half-day, it was much appreciated by the staff, by the parents. I know some of them ran rampant, "Oh no, childcare." But as a parent, my son came home the other day, I said, "Sweetheart, how are you?" And he was going, "I think I have a headache, Mama." I said, "Yes, sweetie, I think you need to lie down a little bit." And so when he's, when we told him, "You have a half-day for the temperature," he said, "Well, why?" Dr. Ware came up with this decision with, you know, and he said, "He's a really smart man." So my son thanks you greatly for the foresight, and so do many of the staff, because I don't believe any of us would have made it through the entire day. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public input, I have Brian Kane.
My name is Brian Kane. I live at 57 Arthur Street here in Chickapi. Not only am I a resident, diligent voter and homeowner, I'm about as invested in the education of Chickapi students as one can be. I'm a teacher at the academy, a new building rep for the CEA, an assistant football coach at Chickapi Comp. My wife is a Chickapi High grad, a teacher in the district, and we are the parents of one current Chickapi student and another that will start with Chickapi Public Schools next year. I believe in the education in this city so much, I facilitated our students at the academy, creating a social media presence to show us in a positive light that has never been done before. I'm so invested in the education in Chickapi that I took a significant pay cut to work in this district. If I had stayed in Springfield, I would have made $8,000 more dollars last year, seven more this year, and roughly about the same next. So what is Chickapi doing to bring in or retain teachers like me that are intertwined within the community? 2% isn't the answer. Not with other districts offering signing bonuses between $5,000 and $10,000. 2% is a carrot to those members that only see the final dollar amount and not the damages we'll do in the long run. We would have been better off doing what other districts did and getting retention bonuses the last three years. Insurance, my insurance went up 6%, so a 2% salary raise does not truly increase my income. For the CEA, why didn't we as a union show strength and reject the proposal? By accepting, they know we will cave in future negotiations, knowing they can offer peanuts because it appears most members will accept any raise regardless. By accepting the proposal, we show how weak we really are by caving and not fighting for what is rightfully deserved. Some members of the committee have made it clear they do not care for the opinions of non-resident employees. Where are resident CEA members? Why aren't you speaking out? Take today, for example, many complained about having to stay in the building a full day since there's no language written in the contract. Where are you speaking out and taking action? Union leadership needs to impress more upon what is right because clearly our members and the majority of our negotiations team are unwilling to fight that fight. Maybe we need to find leadership that will lead. The CEA may be democratically run, but leaders sometimes need to do what is best for all and lead when we cannot see for ourselves. For the mayor and members of the school committee, why is 2% being offered now? Why was this not done in June when we could have salvaged people leaving? Does the school committee want what is best-for-all staff, for those they are related to, or is this a ploy for votes in November? Why did we have to wait for Dr. Ware to be in place instead of doing what is right in June? Doing it then would have set Dr. Ware up with the best possible staff to start his tenure. Y'all listened to many staff members wanting Dr. Ware, but did not listen to us when we called for negotiations. Is a 2% really going to retain teachers? I want my children to have the best possible teachers, but how many will leave anyway due to salaries not matching? It happened up until the start of the school year, and will happen during the year. 2% isn't filling vacancies still available, which means those of us working have to pull more weight, which is worth far more than the 2% being offered. Potential burnout for being loyal to Chickapi Schools is worth more than that. I can give you the names of excellent staff who would have taught my children but left for better pay. However, out of respect to them, I will not sit here and do that. How about property taxes potentially going to be raised? If it is more than what the 2% is going to be, those of us that are Chickapi residents will lose money, good educators, and coworkers. Lastly, as I have stated, I urge you to stop the hemorrhaging of excellent school staff before Chickapi becomes a place that is good enough to live, good enough to pay my salary, but not good enough to educate my children. Do it as right, not as cheapest. Thank you.
Next up for public input, I have Kate Moss.
Good evening. My name is Kate Moss, address 115 Hampton Street. And I would like to start by thanking Dr. Ware and his team for their collaboration with the CEA and the decision to have today and tomorrow be half-day for our students. I hope to provide some insight and thoughtfulness to the school committee members and Chickapi community from a physical educator's perspective. While I work in a building where the majority of rooms are air-conditioned and the contingency plan, should the gym become unbearable, is to teach in the classrooms, telling my students that we're going to have PE in their classrooms instead of in the gym would be one of the greatest disappointments of their days. In addition to never wanting to disappoint my students, these early days are all about setting up classroom routines and expectations. This helps us set up for a successful school year. Having my students learn in the gym builds rapport and relationships, and for many of my students, it's the most movement of their day. Yesterday, I taught a full day. When I entered the gym, it was 80 degrees, and by the time I left, it was 86 degrees with more than 65% humidity. Today, I entered the gym at 82 degrees, and when I checked it at 2:30, it was 88 degrees. The heat continues to build in these buildings, and the more hot days in a row, the more the heat is retained in our rooms that lack air conditioning. I know of at least two other elementary gyms that have thermometers that were well over 88 degrees. At least three others, I can confidently say that were well over 80 degrees. Our elementary students do not have the experience or wherewithal to know, really, when they need water or are overheating, as exhibited by my colleague. When I started in Chickapi seven years ago, the rumor was that all buildings would have air conditioning by 2020. While we know there have been unforeseen challenges that have prevented a great deal of work from being completed, the gymnasiums and cafeterias were not a majority part of that plan. We are now facing the climate concerns in real time. Last June, we had air quality issues, and these are not the first extreme heat days we have seen during my time in education, and they won't be the last. That being said, I am asking school committee members to focus first on completing the air conditioning project in all areas where staff work and students are serviced. The reality is, the years are getting hotter. Please find a way to accelerate the updating of air conditionings in our buildings, including the cafeterias, offices, and gymnasiums. Please also consider updating the water fountains in our buildings to include water bottle filling stations. They're really nice in here, we'd like them too. This could also help with excessive plastic waste and save on costs associated with continuing to purchase plastic water bottles. Furthermore, since I have a feeling time on learning will be a concern, please begin communication with the staff. We are invested in our students' education, and there may be other solutions different from past practice of tacking on days in June. Speaking from eight years of experience, Septembers and Junes as an educator, September and June are not comparable. The electricity from staff and students during September, even on our half-days, is full. It's exciting, it's motivating. There is no comparison to our time right now. That compared to June, I'll just say, the energy is very different. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public input is Laura Demakis.
Laura Demakis and I work at Chickapi, in Chickapi, at Bellamy Middle School. Good evening, everyone, nice to see you again. I'm here tonight in spirit of transparency to let you know that the Chickapi Education Association negotiation team decided to put out the vote for your school committee proposals that you had submitted to us for our salary increases. We appreciate the proposed wage increases to help our competitiveness to the salaries of other districts. Although this is only a Band-Aid, and the CEA does look forward to mutually beneficial negotiations in the future to continue to negotiate to retrain and attract qualified staff, we know we need to serve our students best. As of right now, I just wanted to tell you where the vote stands. So in Unit A, where we stand right now is 93.2% of our Unit A votes yes. Unit B, right now, as it stands, 64.3% vote yes. Unit D is at 93.8%, and Unit E is at 96.3% yes. I would also like to take a moment to thank some CEA folks. I would like to thank, publicly thank, Robin Lucier, who served as our treasurer for over a decade. And Robin has retired a couple of years ago and is spending time with her family now. And we are welcoming Cheryl O'Connor, who is at Chickapi Comp as our new CEA treasurer. I would also like to thank Kathy Abboud, serving as our social chair, and we look forward to a new social chair at the CEA. So thank you all.
Thank you. Next up for public input is Christine Avery.
Good evening, Dr. Ware, Mayor View, and school committee members. My name is Christine Avery. I live at Ingham Street in Chickapi, and I am a paraeducator. We are paraeducators. The paraeducator salary does not equal the job we do. We teach, we run student groups. Like teachers, we need to plan and prepare for these groups. Yet we receive no planning or preparation time as to not to take away from student learning, because that's important to us. Many come in early to prepare for the day, at least an hour. There are paraeducators in buildings at 7:30 in the morning because they're dedicated and we want to teach students. We train other paraeducators on different programs the district uses, such as Read Naturally, Read Live, and Story Works, with no additional compensation. At the beginning of August, there was a training workshop for Linda Mood Bell and Sing Stars from 8:30 to 3:45. Unit A was paid $35 per hour, Unit E was paid $16.058 for the same exact training. Maybe that's why we can't get highly-qualified paraeducators in Chickapi. Health insurance costs are rising. Though we may be receiving a 4% raise, even with this raise, we are losing overall income. Many paraeducators work a second job. The previous information about insurance and the raise being offered should be explained, should explain why second jobs are needed. And I myself worked a second job up until this past school year, starting this year. This is the first year I have not worked a second job. It's time for the city to invest in those who invest their all into our future in Chickapi. It's kids, and paraeducators do that. And on a side note, I can remember being a little girl and saying to my mom, "How come daddy gets home so late? School gets out at 3 o'clock." He was a teacher, I couldn't figure out why he wasn't home. Because he needed time to plan, he needed time to prepare, he needed to get things done. He needed to get things done. And that's what all dedicated staff do. And each and every staff member, I don't care if you're Unit A, Unit B, Unit C, Unit D, Unit E, whatever unit you are, you are important to the district and the school.
Thank you. Next up for public input is Michael Sullivan.
Hi, Michael Sullivan. I happen to live in Northampton. I'm a coach in the new superintendent's induction program. That program is sponsored by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Those organizations have a vested interest in seeing that new superintendent's do what they can to focus their school districts on teaching and learning and equity, and on developing the capacity of their staffs, all their staffs, and then also in their thinking strategically about how they use district resources and in their ability to kind of plan ahead over multi-year periods for complex organizations that school districts are. Also, new superintendent's face lots of challenges that they don't learn about any other way, like needing to make decisions about how to handle excessive heat. So there's lots that they could use some help with. And so we have a three-year program that's really got two main components. One of them is monthly classroom sessions, mostly all-day sessions. Sometimes they're remote, where the entire cohort of new superintendent's in the state, usually between 20 and 30 every year, get together and learn about some of those topics that I just mentioned. Then the other half of the program involves individual coaching sessions where I meet with Dr. Ware, and there's a handful of coaches across the state that work with the new superintendent's to meet with them individually, usually a couple of times a month. It also includes being a fly on the wall at retreats and meetings and things like that, where the superintendent might ask their coach to collect some kind of targeted feedback on how things are going. So that's what we do. In the third year of the program, it's really, it's a consultancy model where superintendent's meet with geographic, other superintendent's, usually in the same geographic area of the state, to talk about problems of practice. So that's the structure of the program. Very excited to be working with Dr. Ware this year. And the last thing I wanted to say, sometimes school committees are tempted to ask coaches about how we see things going for the new superintendent's. Generally, that's discouraging for us because we would really like to say how awesome we think they're doing, but we pretty much try and not provide feedback, either positive or negative, because we really want to be trusted by the super to talk about anything they need to talk about. And so to kind of keep that trust, we don't like to be in a role of providing feedback directly about performance. So just a few things about how things work. Thanks very much for your time.
We'll revisit our first person who signed up remotely. That's Gregory Bennett. Is Greg joining us remotely or in person? Seeing none, that concludes public input. We have no visitors scheduled today for our agenda, and we'll move on to approval of minutes 23-9-1.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on August 16, 2023 be approved.
Vice Chair Susan Loops could have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Reports 23-9-2.
Report on personnel action taken.
No motion needed.
No motion needed. Just a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
It was wonderful.
Sandra, you have the floor.
It's wonderful to see, I think there's about 52 appointments on this personnel list, so it's wonderful to see that with two resignations. Sad to see people exit our system, but certainly want to welcome, wish them well as they're moving on to something else, as well as to welcome the 52 new individuals that we are adding to our school system. And it's a variety of people, from paraprofessionals, teachers, a bandleader, so it's wonderful to see this variety.
Thank you. Any other further discussion on personnel and action taken? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business, 23-9-3.
Move that the bills warrant S0081823 totaling $469,041.79 be approved.
Don Lamoth, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and Sam, could you please read the warrants into our official record?
Yes. So I will read the totals of all three warrants, and we will act upon each individually. For athletics, $47,609. Food services, $69,755. General expenses, $332,840. Grants, $421,267. Maintenance, $379,630. Utilities, $171,059. Special education, $884. Student activities, $4,668. Transportation.
Just a point of information. I believe it's $14,000.
$14,000, sorry.
Thank you.
$668. For student, transportation, $265,308. Telecommunications, $208, for a grand total of $1,703,231.
Thank you. Any discussion on the first warrant? We'll be voting on them individually, like school committee member Sam Schumsky stated. The first warrant is S0081823 for $469,042. Sarah, could I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries. 23-9-4.
Move that the bills warrant S082523 totaling $224,670.43 be approved.
Sam Schumsky, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the warrant? Sarah, could we take a roll call, please?
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries. 23-9-5.
Move that the bills warrant S090123 totaling $1,9,519.1 be approved.
Jack, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the warrant? Seeing none, Sarah, could we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the Chicopee Education Association, Unit A, and Chicopee School Committee be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Doug Gerard, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Tim Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be leaving in a minute because I have a document on file with the clerk's office stating potential conflict, but I'm just going to speak if I quit to the raises This is a great first step towards equitable pay for our teachers, securing staff long-term. If we look at the salary schedules for particularly Unit A that we have here on the agenda tonight, there is not all that much to be earned for the earlier years of the contract. There's not all that much of an increase. The real benefit lies in the long-term employment here with the City of Chicopee, where if we look at the salary schedules, the pay increases of this collective 5% that we will be enacting potentially for the next school year is substantial, is several thousand dollars for most of the steps. While this is a great first step, as many of the CEA have mentioned to us in public input, in emails, in phone calls, and other correspondences, we have a long way to go. Other districts contribute or at a face value charge less for insurance, which the city needs to, in my opinion, start rethinking completely. That, in conjunction with cost of living, inflation, other things, just makes being a teacher right now and being someone in public employment in general, not all that lucrative. And we want to make Chicopee Public Schools and the City of Chicopee the best possible place for not just teachers, but for DPW employees, for planning department employees, for staff and human resources in the treasurer's office and the collector's office. We want to make this the best place possible to work for them. And all of that needs to be taken into consideration, insurance, pay raises, all of it. We cannot just do this one simple step and call it a day. The effort needs to continue to be made.
Any other discussion? Sandra, you have the floor.
Just for the viewing public, please state for us the funding source for the raises.
The funding source for the raises? If I may, can I turn it over to my financial director? So I'm going to ask Mr. John Marecki to come up to the mic for a quick minute.
Good evening. Could you repeat that question again, please?
Just for the viewing public, please share the funding source for the raises.
Okay. With the funding source, we're going to be using additional, the educational monies that we have set aside with the city to fund these raises. Just a point of information, it's the educational stabilization. Correct. So we'll go to city council and request that monies deposited into our accounts at that point.
So once we, if we have an approval, then we will have to go before the city council for their approval as well.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Are you all set?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Vice Chair Susan Zatella Loops.
Thank you, Mr. Marecki. Can you please explain the exact details in this new memorandum of agreement?
Sure.
In front of me, like the exact amount of the raise and step increases?
Sure, I'll go through it as best as I can. I know you have in your packet, you have those individual salary amounts that are on there. We're talking about Unit A here, so I'm just going to have it. And how it's broken down in the memorandum of agreement is currently, right now, there's a 3% raise for Unit A currently with our agreement right now. On that, we'll be adding 2% onto that, so a total of 5% for FY '24. We also made a 13th step for most of the columns, except for Bachelors, which they'll increase to a 12th step in that column, and we also made some changes to Step 10 in Bachelors and then Step 11 in the other ones to increase the separation. Along with the 13th step, there's also a separation of $1,600 that will be, that's added into that additional step. If I may.
Dr. Ware, you have the floor.
Thank you. Ms. Zatella Loops, just, I think you're also asking more specifically, if you want to, for public record, what it looks like for someone moving from, like if they are in the particular step. So if they're in Unit A, if they're on Master Step 6, currently, they earn $63,784. That's with the current contract. What we're proposing, they would move to $65,022. And then for '24, '25, with an additional 2%, they would move to $66,322. So what you would see is if you actually could break out all these salary schedules, you would see whatever step the unit member's on, and then a proposal for, if we could do a page for each person, that's what you would see. So that's just the example of someone who's on Master Step 6.
Sure. Don Lamoth, you have the floor.
Yes, one of the things that we've gone through in past negotiations is they would bring up the salary scales of other districts and show us where the top teachers from other districts were, and we're always woefully behind. This contract, as I've listened to the speakers tonight, and, yeah, they're saying, well, an extra 2% is not much, but what we did is we put the money at the top steps. We created a top step, and we added to the existing top step. What we're trying to do is get the upper end up towards the other districts. It's a first step. Our goal is, as long as we have money coming in, is to negotiate in good faith and try to get it up so that we're not the lowest in the district and that we're going to envy of the Western Mass. That's our goal.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sure. Ron. Ron Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank for Mr. Wagner for his comments. I think they are spot-on. I support them entirely. And I also want to thank Mr. Marecki, Ms. Green, and Becky, and any of the other people that were on this committee to put this proposal together, because I know it was a lot of work, very intense, and I want to thank you for what you did and your efforts.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Out of the chair.
Sorry. Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Nine yes, one out of the chair.
Motion carries. Move on to 23-9-7.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the Chicopee Education Association, Unit B, and Chicopee School Committee be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Sandra, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Tim, just a point of information around 23-9-7, Unit B.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any discussion? Vice Chair Susan Zatella Loops.
Could we please have that same explanation?
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. So if, I'll give an explanation for a Unit B member, if they are in elementary school, they, elementary vice principal or person who works in Unit B, a Step 1 for 200 days, because we have a difference in contract, just so people understand that, 200 days elementary and then 220 for the secondary. The current pay is $89,577 at Step 1. The proposal brings them with the 2% for the '24 fiscal year, $91,333, and then for the fiscal year '25 would bring them to $93,360.
Thank you. Don Lamoth, you have the floor.
In Unit B, we put a smaller adjustment because we're not having as hard a time getting Unit B people, but we had to put the adjustment in there as well as the raise in order to keep them in a position where people would want to move up to another salary level or compensated for doing a different job.
Did you want a summary from John Marecki, Vice Chair?
Let me go through, so, just like Unit A, there's, originally, they were to get 2% for this year in '24. We were adding the additional 2%. And the other thing we're also doing, we expanded the new Step 4 in this year's contract that was negotiated. We added another half percent to the .75, to make it 1.25 additional from that third to fourth step, to have a little better, more increase for those individuals. Because we do find that three steps goes through pretty quickly, four step comes up pretty quickly. So a lot of our Unit B members are at that step, or just about to be at that step. And then also, and I did not mention it before, and I apologize for that, but also, there's the second year of this proposal that has FY '25 in it, for just a straight 2% to all lines.
Thank you, any further discussion? Sarah, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries, 23-9-8.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the Chicopee Education Association, Unit D, and Chicopee School Committee be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Tim Wagner, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Any discussion on the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm sorry, superintendent, go ahead.
I didn't, just wanted to speak out of turn. Okay, so for Unit D, it's broken down by hourly. So on the schedule, and then I'll turn the floor back over to the mayor, maybe Mr. Marecki. So if a current Unit D member is at Step 6, for the current, for the current contract, they're at $21.59, well, $59.45 in this percentage after the decimal. And then for the proposed year, which is FY '24, they will move to $22.01. And then for the FY '25 school year, we would, the member would move to $22.45, or 46 cents, if we round up. And so, again, if you compare the salary schedules to get side by side, you will see that there would be a gradual increase.
Vice Chair Susan Satella Loops.
Mr. Marecki, please.
Yes. Just like in Unit B, there was a 2% raise already there in the current contract. We'll be adding another 2% to that, to make it a grand total of 4% for FY '24. And then in FY '25, it's another 2% for FY '25.
Thank you, any further discussion? Chair, Vice Chair.
So if I'm reading this correctly, this salary range, this is for Unit D, our hard-working clerical staff, our senior payroll associates, clerical bachelors, clerical with an associate's degree. I see a price range between $19.98 an hour and $27.64 an hour, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's with the 2% increase?
To the 2% that's already there.
Right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Sarah, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard is out of chair. That's nine yes, one out of chair.
Motion carries, 23-9-9.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the Chicopee Education Association, Unit E, and Chicopee School Committee be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Jason Dowd, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, any discussion? Don Lamoth.
In Unit E, we made some adjustments to the steps. We put a new top step in, and we eliminated the bottom step, but we renumbered them, so we stayed with six steps. And then we gave them the raise. And, once again, we're trying to keep, we're having a hard time getting teachers and paras, and we're trying to do the best we can to move them up. Just the beginning.
Thank you. Doctor Ware, did you want to comment?
Yes, just for the record, if a current para is at Step 6, in elementary schools, they would start at $28,802 for where they're currently, where they stand in the current contract. The proposal brings them to $31,503. And then for the FY '25 school year, it would be $32,133.
Vice Chair.
Thank you. So for our hard-working para professionals in the elementary schools, and then the middle schools, I see a salary range of $20,818, and up to $34,896. Is that correct, Mr. Marecki? And I do see a-
$34,896, yep.
Okay, and then I do see a different salary schedule for teachers, teacher assistants.
Yes.
So can you explain to us, please?
Yes, sure, as Mr. Lamoth talked about, they originally had a 2% in this contract, and we added that extra 2% to make it four. And then, once we had those numbers, we took out that first step and shifted everything up. So the new two became one, and work it way down, and then we created that sixth step. So the percentages that they made, it made an impact on what they'll be getting for FY '24. Along with that, in FY '25, like everybody else, we do have that 2% that will be calculated for FY '25.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Doctor Gerard.
Thank you, Mayor. When this contract negotiation was going on, I felt that we should look at each individual occupation or job in the school system. And we were doing a pretty good job looking at other communities, and we were trying to get in line with some of the other towns regarding some of these jobs. It's great that everybody gets a raise, and I just want to go on record saying that I would really have liked to have split these units up and look at each job individually. You know, and I agree that the paras, you know, are underpaid. And I feel that for the work that they do, and not just the paras, but there were some other jobs in the school system that I felt were out of line with other districts. So I really wanted to take these units and kind of split them up, and look at each different job, and try to get in line with other communities to, number one, build more morale in the building, to have a stronger team, to have everybody working for each other, really caring about each other, building morale. So it's great that, you know, we're addressing this early, since we had another year to go on the contract. But I hope in the future, you know, myself and the colleagues, you know, we can figure out how to get certain positions in better line with other communities. Thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call, Sarah.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries, 23-9-10.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1459 Custodial Unit, and Chicopee School Committee be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Vice Chair Susan Satella Loops, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion, or I need to make a motion, to postpone this to our next meeting on September 20th, please. We're not ready to proceed, the union is not ready to proceed yet.
So we have a motion on the floor to postpone to our next meeting on 9/20, any discussion? Don Lamoth.
How was this on the agenda if it's not ready to proceed?
The agenda was prepared last week.
Okay, so the union called you and told you they're not ready? Okay.
So it was just a timing issue, and with the holiday, you know, we lost a day in terms of being able to make sure the agenda was tight.
Thank you, any other discussion? Vice Chair.
We don't have any backup information in our packet either, so.
So, all in favor of postponing? Aye. Anyone opposed to postponing? I'm going to take the vote again, all in favor of postponing? Aye. Thank you. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, it's unanimous, motion carries. 23-9-11.
Move that the memorandum of agreement-
23-9-14.
11.
Okay, so we have to make a motion for each one of those, because we need to make a motion, got it?
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1459, school nurses and Chicopee School Committee be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Vice Chair Susan Loops, can I get a motion?
A motion to postpone, please.
Postpone to the-
9/20, September 20th meeting.
For the same reason, union not ready to proceed.
For the same reason, right.
Any discussion? Don.
Is that the same for the rest of the Commercial Workers Union contract?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Same reason, thank you.
Would it be point of order, would it be proper to amend the order to postpone all of the UFCW ones?
They're individual line items on the agenda, and I'd feel more comfortable if we did them one by one. So the motion is to postpone, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Are you opposed? All in favor?
Yes.
Unanimously? All right, let's try again, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Please? Thank you. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, it's unanimous. 23-9-12.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1459, Technical Unit, and Chicopee School Committee be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Vice Chair Susan Satella Loops.
I make a motion to postpone to the September 20th meeting, because the union is not ready to proceed.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous motion carries. And 23-9-13.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1459, school cafeteria workers and Chicopee School Committee be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Vice Chair Susan Satella Loops, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to postpone to the September 20th meeting, because the union is not ready to proceed.
Don, a discussion?
On these motions, they're coming on the 20th, is that what I'm getting? I mean, we're going to postpone, but they're coming on the 20th?
I'd like to, I can't predict the future, but I hope so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? So the motion is postponed until the 9/20 meeting, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to 23-9-14.
Move that the following job descriptions be approved. A, family and school engagement liaison, and B, maintenance craftsman, general maintenance painter, plow.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve job descriptions.
Motion to approve the job descriptions, any discussion? Job descriptions, all in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Roll call on those, and that's fine. Unanimous. 23-9-15.
Move that the first reading of student cell phones and electronic devices policy, File J45, be approved.
Sam, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, any discussion?
No discussions.
There is no discussion. All in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries. 23-9-16.
Move that the school committee policy, File B20, be waived so that the second reading of student cell phones and electronic devices policy, File J45, may be approved due to the urgency of the matter.
Should be waived and approved.
Chip, thank you for the motion, we have a motion to waive the policy, File B20, so the second reading of the student cellphone electronic device, File J45, may be approved due to the urgency of the matter. Any discussion? Pretty straightforward, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimously, motion carries. 23-9-16.
17.
I'm sorry, 17, 23-9-17.
Move that the request from Spirit of Dance Awards to use the facilities at Bellamy Middle-
The point of information, 17, is the second reading.
My apologies, yep. Move that the second reading of student cell phones and electronic devices policy, File J45, be approved.
Doctor Gerard, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve, any discussion? Tim Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Didn't make the comments on the last two, but I'll make them now. I'd sent an email out to the superintendent, because I'd been, as some of you know, I was sort of the public face of this. I was in most of the news stories when this policy was first being announced. And I gave my reasons for supporting it, and I gave my intentions to follow up through surveys of staff and students. We did survey the staff at Chicopee High. But I wanted to work with the Student Advisory Council to survey the students and potentially get their inputs on what they thought might be good for a policy. And frankly, we didn't have that. They'd expressed some difficulties in getting that survey to happen in the first place. Doctor Ware gave me as assurance as it will happen indeed. But I'll be voting no on the final approval of the policy for right now, simply because I wanted that data before making any permanent decisions, and if we wanted to change it, having to go through the process all over again. I just don't think that without a little bit more data, it's the right thing to do. Without input from all the stakeholders, it's the right thing to do. And that's my reasoning, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Anyone opposed? One opposed. So we have nine in favor, one opposed, motion carries. 23-9-18.
Move that the request from Spirit of Dance Awards to use the facilities at Bellamy Middle School on April 27th, 2024, and April 28th, 2024, be approved in accordance with the Community Use of School Facilities policy.
Sandra, can I get a motion?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, any discussion? Sandra.
Do we have a little bit of information about the Spirit of Dance Awards? The information wasn't legible on the supplement that we received down to our minutes?
Oh, I can-
Where they're located, do we have that?
I'm looking at it right now, I don't see where they're, yes, they are a regional dance competition with a home office on Long Island, New York, and an office in Pemberg, Massachusetts. They've been in business since 2009, and venues throughout New England, New York, and New Jersey. So they're asking New Yorkers out of facilities, because they usually bring their own sound system and sound engineer, and their own floor to dance upon. And most of their events run Friday through Sunday. So they're asking to use the facilities at Bellamy Middle School from Friday, 3:00 p.m., through Sunday, 8:00, 10:00 p.m. They say load out, and to me, that's probably leaving.
Are we aware, perhaps, you may not be aware, but, Mr. Mayor, do we know if they've participated? If we've had them in our school before, just curious?
I am not aware of that. I don't have the best memory when it comes to the Spirit of Dance Awards. Is anyone familiar with them? Is this a new?
I don't think we can recall, like, all the outside plate, I mean, I don't know. It doesn't ring a bell. I don't know.
It does not ring a bell, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our regular agenda, executive session, Vice Chair Susan Satella Loops.
Move that the school committee adjourn into executive session to approve executive session minutes, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to not, and not to reconvene in open session. The chair declares that an executive session is necessary to protect the bargaining position of the committee.
Any discussion on heading into executive session? We'll take a roll call to head into executive session.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Satella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.